I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the pledge of flag, please.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have about five or six seats up front here, seven seats, if anyone wants to come on to the front, certainly welcome. Okay, minutes of the September 18th meeting, do we have a motion to accept the minutes? We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report and payment of the bills, we have a motion to approve the financial report. We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the financial report? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we're going to bypass the agenda a little bit, we're going to go right to town administrator's report. Lou, will you knock out this public works agreement real quickly?
It's a public works agreement with Schwab LLC, and it's for the project over there on Bridge Street called the Bridge Street Mini 40 Dollar General, it's going to be a property with the RMR was located, because it's going to be subdivided into two different ownerships, and the town will be responsible actually to extend water service and sewer service for that. This agreement basically provides for 750 linear P of sewer, uh, where, excuse me, into that property from Bridge Street, and the cost of that is estimated at $3,000, and we'll require Schwab to put up that in letter of credit, sure that have worked some, but probably there are benefits to have it done, so I would ask the board to agree with Schwab to have a public works agreement with that company and then report with that project.
Very good, we have a motion to accept the public works agreement with Schwab LLC, the third.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion on that public works agreement? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, all right, at our last meeting, we of course introduced ordinance 5-2019 and ordinance 6-2019, and there was a lot of questions of whether or not we were going to open up the floor tonight for any additional public comment. Certainly our charter doesn't require us to open the floor back up, but we will open the floor back up, I'd like to, when we call, when you raise your hand, we'll kind of go to this side and kind of go around, I'd like for you to go to the podium, and on the sign-in sheet, sign in, we've received, and I'll go over the comments real quickly, but we've received a lot of comments, not as many as I really thought that we were going to get, but we've received a lot of comments, good, bad, or indifferent, and I'd like for, to take maybe one to two minutes and express your favor or concerns in regards to those two ordinances. I just wanted to let everyone know for the record, we received public comments from Ed Ginder, who's on the planning board, we received comments from Sean Davis with MRA, we received comments from Dwight Tome, Baker Tome and Emery, we received comments from Jennifer Janash, I believe, we received comments from, multiple pages of comments from a young lady, we received comments from GNS Contracting, we received comments from Rod, Mr., uh, or Yauhura Rodriguez, we received comments from Mr. John Connolly. So I just wanted to let everyone know that these comments are here and they will be placed in record, we also received comments from our legal counsel on several items also. Jean, did I miss anyone? And earlier today, we received a comment from, I sent it to the board. There was one more person, bear with me.
Audrey Wilson?
Yes, Audrey Wilson, a comment. So with that, I'd like to, do you want to talk about the ordinance source, or you want to go right into the public comment? Let's go into the comments. All right, anyone like to say anything, go up to the podium, please sign in. We'll just come and go right, come on in, we got one right away here. They look like they're in a hurry to leave.
Of course. We're not in a hurry to leave, but my name is John Campus, I was formerly with the YMCA Cecil County, now with Sideline Properties here, to give you my viewpoint on the sports park that's coming, these fellows behind me are also part of our program, this is Ray and Mark, their fathers are coaches within the program, their daughters are moving on to compete at the collegiate level, but I've been a member of the Cecil County resident for many years, worked at the YMCA, many of you folks have been battling this little sports competition battle for a long time, thinking about some of my buddies coming in, all the complaining that I hear all the time, I run a Monday Night Football, fantasy football league, they were at my house just this past Monday, they're complaining about the construction up and down Route 40, they complain about it, but I think it's fantastic. It's infrastructure that's coming to this county, that's bringing business and jobs to this county, it's long overdue in this county, it's great, if you look, if you concentrate on that little bubble and you don't see that whole storm of bubbles, you miss the big picture. I think it's fantastic, I think it's long overdue for the county, likewise with the sports complex. I'm Mr. Joe Jockhead, I played football and baseball at college, YMCA, Mr. Mike Brown just recently hired me with this new sports complex, I think these things are long overdue in the county. I've said for a long time, you may agree or disagree, for 25, 30 years behind, all our local residents are at Cecil, Delaware, we need to pick up the pace, and the infrastructure going up and down Route 40, kudos to all the administrators in the county, long overdue, this sports complex, I think it's going to be a fantastic hit for the county, it's going to be a fantastic hit for our grandchildren, our children, for the future of the county, long overdue, people, including myself, we all, we all struggle with change, we all struggle with change, but in the end, change is good. I hope we get the support with the Maryland Legends, with these families, with these fellows, I don't want to put words in their mouth, they're more welcome to come up and talk, but with the Maryland Legends, just our travel program that's going to be part of this, we have approximately 10 teams, 200 families, a lot of boys and girls that are working towards college scholarships, most importantly, working towards bettering themselves, so they can, they can attend colleges, they compete at the collegiate level, and they better life for them. So again, thank you for your folks, thank you for your folks for being here, this is something that I'm very excited to be part of, I've been a resident of this county for a long time, I think it's long overdue, I think it's exciting, I think five years down the road, we're going to look back and say, man, this is one of the best things that ever happened to this county.
Thank you.
So, thank you for the, I know I'm going to be finished, so I apologize.
Hello, my name is Ray Felaski, like John said, I'm a part of the Maryland Legends baseball program, I've been with them for about six years, I've lived in Cecil County and Kensington Courts for almost 20 years, and when I heard about this, this project, I thought it would be, I think it's going to be very, very good for the, for the community as a whole. I have no reservations about it being in my backyard, as people are saying, I think it's, I've been to many, over the six or seven years my boys have been playing baseball, I've been to many different places, watching the towns, there's little towns that we go to, that we play tournaments in, and it just seems like, it just helps the town, because there, there's so many people that are just giving to, you know, when we come to play a baseball game, we stay, we give money, we eat, we eat, there are a lot of good things that can happen to the community, as a whole, I just think it's a good thing, I've been looking for something for our boys that they can go to, a place where the community can go to, I, as a whole, I'm not really good at this, I'm sorry, but I just, I think it's, I think it's a good thing, I really do, I've been a part of this for a couple of years now, six, seven years, trying to, trying to help promote this, and I think, I think this would be a good thing. Thank you.
Mark Parrott. I live in Northeast, I'm not going to say anything about the teams, because you guys all know, my daughter does play on the team, what I'm going to go with is, I've worked in for 30 years as an electrician, I spent two weeks in accounting in Cecil County being an electrician, rest of my time was spent in Delaware, working where you can earn an income, I think businesses like the Cecil County has been losing out for a long time, descending all the money working, coming out of Delaware, all we are is a, is a home and place where we come to sleep, I think it'd be nice for our kids to be able to drive 15 minutes of work every once in a while, instead of doing like I go drive an hour to work every day. That's the side of it, and then, they are correct, because these small towns that were dead at one point, where they bring it in a complex like this, and the town's booming again, and the more you have communities working in the town, it drives out the stuff that you don't want in the town. It gives the kids someplace to go, they can do, they can go watch the sport, sometimes during these places, I talk to people that are there, and they're like, where are your kids from, and they'll tell them where they're from, and they just go simply just to watch the games, to see the kids play, it gives a place for our kids to go, that they can't get in trouble, because we all know we don't want our kids in the hole. Thank you for your commentary.
My name's Sean McTagg, I'm a father here, my son plays here at the Elton Little League, and for the last couple of years, my son has played travel ball down in Aberdeen, we have some friends who play travel ball in Delaware, so what this complex can do is bring those people back, like myself and these other members of our community, to play baseball here, softball, lacrosse, which we miss out, I know a lot of people have also played lacrosse, pro, they go to other places and spend their money in other places other than this town, which we could use that revenue, okay, just to add on with the gentleman was saying, we went up to Hershey, Pennsylvania, we spent our night there in the hotel, spent about 250 bucks, spent two nights there, spent some money at the local restaurant, tasted pretty good, we have a lot of stuff here that we would rather spend our money in this town, so obviously it's about the dollar, all right, but, this, this other complex that my son plays on floods out, we miss baseball games because of the flooding, other teams can't come and play at our complex, we all know it just got washed out, what played, probably a month ago, two months ago, so I, I think this is a good addition to that field, might be able to like partner with them maybe, I'm not saying that's going to happen, but it could be an offset to the times where we can't use the field, but we might be able to.
You will, you will.
Just throw it out there as an idea. As far as that's concerned, I have no other statement.
Thank you. I kind of liked how the flow was going, I kind of liked that a little bit.
Do you want to line up?
That's okay, we'll just kind of keep getting in line like that, if everyone's okay that way.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Hello, John.
How are we doing tonight? Very nice. What's your name?
Sean.
Sean, nice to meet you. Someone?
We walked in late, and I recognize that you've got, got your comments already coming in.
Thank you again for the opportunity to comment tonight, you read my comments, you know where I stand on the issues, so, in the interest of brevity, for me tonight, the elephant in the room is Southfield's request to include element 10.210 in the permissible uses table in art 10, section 7. To me, the way the request came in, it should be sent back to the planning commission. For something as important as this, and the magnitude of Southfield's coming, it deserves proper channels. We were all there at the meeting with the planning commission on 16 September for four hours, but Southfield representatives did not make the request at that meeting, they should have. I think it should be sent back to the planning commission for their consideration, for their vote, and the public's opportunity to comment, and we're all familiar with that. Element 10.210, as anybody knows, you can connect the dots, it's the heated jobs concept for the Southfields project, and without it, the concept that is currently existing cannot continue, but that's not necessarily a bad thing, as my comments would say. What I'm concerned about is that the elephant in the room tonight is really what you're worrying on, and the fact that Southfields has been at the table throughout this whole development process, to me introduces a bias in this document in favor of Southfields. They've asked for changes, some have been implemented, some have not, but this is their key to their jobs concept, and I respect the request that what you approve and recommend is amended articles that were provided to you by the planning commission as a result of that 16th September meeting. So when you go online and look on your website, when you look at the permissible uses table, and you get to Area 10, Storage and Parking, that contains element 10.21, which is storage and enclosed structures and a parent unit, which is essentially warehouse, okay, it should stay as way the planning commission recommended, there are no marks in this column at all, there should not be allowable use. Tonight, if you vote in favor of including 10.210, you haven't voted in favor of the people, you voted in favor of Southfields and the dollars. You've got the chance to make an ordinance that will work for the people to represent their rights and interests, but it's got an objective, and it should not include 10.210 or 10.21. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll sign out, I need just a few minutes. I recommend everybody read the article on Southfield today. And of course, that's Mr. Dwight Parrott.
Dwight Parrott, yes. Local business manager, charter manager, until last time in Harford County. I came the first thing reading ahead, I walked away really, because no one seemed to be interested. I recommend everybody go down to Harford County, and then go to New York, and see what they've done in those counties of, up in Delaware, Harford County, and see all the buildings, and beautiful ballpark, everything. The reason I do that, really, a lot of people pay taxes over there, they're building houses, nice office, they're living. I remember the first night here, they talked about all these manufacturing factories going over here, they're not going to be manufacturing factories coming here, the, it's a, it's a thing, but read this, the thing that excites me about this, one of the things, Mr. Jackson came back with a lot of new plans, and I'm not sure if you folks will know that, like for senior living, my wife, I may sign up for that already, senior living, goes out sports complex, what's wrong with it, gorgeous sports complex, it just makes a lot of sense, a lot of tax money there, a lot of people coming here, the, you know where to put this big project in, in Fair Hill, don't forget, a lot of people, international people come all over, just like the Indian Kentucky, they show their horses from England, Germany, all over the world, come here to compete. And the other thing that I think is really interesting, is this letter today, or the article today, talks about they're going, they've changed the level, they're more single family homes in. Thing we're missing in Cecil County, I feel bad if I've got a resident here, we don't have taxes, we need to grow that, and this project, it's going to be, I think, a fantastic opportunity for the town to grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, Mr. Dwight Tome.
Good evening, Dwight Tome, I thank you all for the opportunity to address you, as you know, I sent comments previously, a couple of comments I just want to emphasize, Article 10, Section 10.20, the fact of the matter is, if you're going to have a planned unit development, you have to have a major employer, you have to have a major investor and a taxpayer to make all that work. The businesses that we're talking about in this kind of use, it's the kind of businesses that are large businesses that have been attracted to this community already, Amazon, Restoration Hardware, IKEA, without that, a large planned unit development probably will never happen, because somebody has to make that big initial investment, and somebody has to be able to pay those taxes, and everything to make the infrastructure make sense. So I would urge you to include that, I think that was left out by oversight more than anything else, I think a lot of people thought it was going to be included, because it was always talked about that there was going to be light industry for, I want a better terminology in that area, in a pud, as well as commercial and residential. The other issues I wanted to raise, because I just wanted to address the ordinance tonight, is Article 11, Section 11A, modifications, you have language in it that talks about where you're supposed to point out what caused the need for a modification, and I would suggest to you, it's really not important, what caused the need for modification, what should be important, and what you should give to your planning commissioners as tools to make a good decision about whether or not a modification should be approved, and I would suggest that you refer back instead to Section 1 of Article 11, which lays out about 12 good reasons why playing, why you're considering allowing planned unit developments to be adopted, and it talks about better quality development, more efficient development, being able to have housing, commercial, and job all in one area, encourage more effective and more variations in terms of development, that's what you should be addressing if somebody comes for modification, that's what they should be looking at, is meeting those goals, that's what all this planned unit development is all about, is to get away from the old zoning ordinance, and give you, give your planning commission the flexibility to meet the goals that you want to meet with this kind of development. The other comments I had was Article 11, Section 17E, I would again suggest to you that when you get into grading and grading plans, typically those are done, that's detail environment, engineering, that's usually done when you actually submit your preliminary plan, rather than making that have to be submitted before the preliminary plan, it's a much better way, use of the engineering time, both of your engineers and developers' engineers, if you just have that submitted as a package, a preliminary plan, and this specific engineering with the grade, rather than having it done piecemeal. And the final thing is just a clarification, it talks about in your ordinance, an appeal is within 30 days of decision, I would suggest to you that you change that to within 30 days of receipt of a written decision, because the person that appeals needs to know for sure what they're appealing from, they need to know the reason behind that, and what the actual decision is. These are just suggestions to try and make the ordinance work better in the future, this is something that hopefully we're going to be using more than once in the future, in the years. So I thank you for your attention, I know you have other people in the speaking, I'll probably have a...
Thank you. Lou?
I just wanted to confirm that I sent in comments in three separate emails?
Yep.
And so, I won't go through all of my comments, but maybe I can send some to the public forum tonight.
Very good. Can I hear you up?
Oh, thank you. So, first is, I'll reiterate comments that I made previously about the lack of infrastructure, the concern about the impact on taxes, and one of the major concerns that I have is that there are other alternatives, when you look at applying the PUD language, that would impact areas already zoned similarly to the Southfields project that's being recommended. I'm going to limit my comments tonight, as I understand, the vote tonight is on the ordinance itself, and so I'll keep my comments limited to that, and not get into a lot of discussion about Southfields itself. I think that the ordinances, the proposal on the, on the revisions, Mr. Connolly had mentioned one of the concerns already, I would also highlight that excluding wholesale sales to be permitted in a large pud would be an area that I would hope we would consider. The distinction between wholesale sales is a fine line with, you know, a Costco or a BJ's type of thing, and I don't think that's really what is intended for that area. Light manufacturing, I previously reiterated, a lot of folks have as well, that it seems inconsistent with truly working to develop the town. The residential piece, I have no concern about, the growth in the town, I have no concern about, it's the impact on this particular area of light manufacturing, light industrial that is a concern for me. I think that also, the high volume of traffic generation being permitted in a small pud doesn't seem to make sense to me, in a smaller scale, you'd be looking maybe at lower volume of traffic activities happening there, that would seem to be more consistent, and I'd ask you to consider that. I think one of the real big areas that I have a concern for is the inconsistent implementation of the comprehensive plan, so I took the time to read through the entire comprehensive plan, to make sure that I was well-rounded in what's stated there, and as I understand it, and quoting from the Elton zoning ordinance subdivision regulations, the purpose of the zoning ordinance is to implement the comprehensive plan. For the town of Elton, in order to promote the health, safety, order, convenience, and general welfare of citizens of the town in accordance with present and future needs, as expressed in the comprehensive plan. In the comprehensive plan, the distinction between a planned unit development, or mixed use, and mixed use, or the planned business park district is articulated, and I think the area that feels like it's being mixed is combining those two concepts, when it's clear in the comprehensive plan that they were separate concepts, and if the ordinances are intended to implement the comprehensive plan, then I don't know why we're looking at the proposals that we're looking at. The PUD zone is intended to provide for a mix of multifamily residential uses with limited commercial activities that primarily serve the local neighborhood development, is intended to be pedestrian-oriented, supported by commercial activities of scale that is less intensely permitted in commercial districts. So the, the comprehensive plan gets very specific about what was intended for a pud and for the development of these regulations, and I don't see that recommendation coming through to the mayor and to the commissioners. I would also request that you look at the words in the comprehensive plan relative to a traditional neighborhood design, which clearly again excludes some of these large-scale manufacturing and industrial proposals. I have two other recommendations, one is regional notice for large puds and opportunity for public comment. It spelled out that citizens adjacent to the puds should receive direct notice, I think public notice, so regional comments could be provided to the council would be appropriate. The regional impact is spelled out in the regulations that are being proposed, so the regional comment seems to make sense. And finally, I think it's interesting that there have been several failed projects in the town previously, and so why not spell out right from the very beginning what some of the remedies are relative to incomplete projects? I think we need to hold these developers accountable for maintaining both developed and undeveloped land, if they find themselves even hit a pause button because of a recession. I'll close just by saying, I live in one of the most beautiful places in Cecil County, I moved here because of its beauty, its community, its thriving nature, from a, from the standpoint of a community. We know that the town has some issues, I'm not here to speak to that, I wanted to focus my comments just on the PUD language itself. I hope that everyone here has the opportunity to make comments, I hope you can consider all of those comments, and at the end of the day, we'll either leave knowing that we've had a city of industry, or a town of Elton, that's a great place to live and thrive. Thank you for your time, thank you for listening, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Jennifer. Jennifer, I didn't have your address on this paper up here.
Yep. It's 1811 Town Point Road in Chesapeake City.
Thank you. Mr. Dave Parrott, looks like he's next.
Good evening, this is Mayor, Commissioner, my name is Dave Parrott, as I think much of you know, I've been in front of you a number of times, I was a little bit concerned about the fact that very often in these things, one of the things that... things that we hear from those speaking is, I've been here X number of years and I don't want to see anything like that change. Therefore, I started thinking about, well, let's say, I have been here for almost 60 years in and near the town of Elton, that is residing in and near the town of Elton. I practiced law here for 45 years. The fact is that the reason that I'm here tonight is, unfortunately, not because I'm getting paid by a client, but it is, in fact, my sincere desire to see the town move forward appropriately in matters relating to development and the amenities that are available to the community, everything that goes into being a part of the community. Long and short, and I will speak fairly short, considering what my wife tells me anyway, long and short is that my urging for you tonight is to pass a planned unit development ordinance. You've seen me, heard me before in this, in this room, pleading for things in the way of development potential, pleading for my clients in terms of what sort of condition should be attached to this or that. The beauty of a planned unit development ordinance is that you can set forth some of these things upfront, in advance, so that anybody, engineers, lawyers, architects, whomever, and then private citizens particularly, can understand what is or is not likely to be permitted in a given area. Therefore, I ask you to pass this planned unit development ordinance, and again, provide that skeleton, that framework for development of this community to proceed in what I think has so far been a pretty exemplary event.
Thank you again.
Hi folks, Peter Klein, Town Point Road in Chesapeake City. Thank you for the nice things you said about my welcome to the left wing.
There you go.
I won't wear it out on record as being concerned in general, especially about the definition of the large planned unit development and I believe the inclusion of industrial and/or manufacturing and/or warehousing, which Jennifer and Mr. Connolly and others have spoken is a mistake and I think should simply be removed, because it's just so out of character for the area. One of the reasons it's out of character is because of the distinct difference in the air and the light and the noise and the water pollution that come from such sorts of uses, despite our federal government's best efforts to try to regulate those things today. In the end, you really simply can't control an awful lot of that. And so, right as I met with you, what's going on here, I understand that you're trying to do the right thing for the community, the people you're elected to represent. I ask a return for a little bit of empathy for your neighbors to the immediate south, which for better or for worse, that's where an awful lot of the light and the noise and the water and the pollution go. And I would like to offer you something to think about before you cast your votes tonight. My grandson has had the opportunity for many years now to go to a very nice facility just across the state lawn called Camp Saginaw. I don't know if you're familiar with it or not, but it's a 300-acre outdoor camp for kids from all over in the summer, and there's, you know, they have pools and archery ranges and all sorts of outdoor activities, including minor sports like canoeing and kayaking and what have you in what is the Great Elk Creek. And it's about 300 acres in size, Camp Saginaw, and I'd like you to imagine, if somebody proposed to buy that and build a industrial manufacturing complex and effectively pave most or all of it, everything that ran off of that property that wasn't, you know, sanitary sewer, right, I'm not disputing that for a minute, but everything else would end up coming right down the Elk Creek, and eventually it would end up not only going through the creek and down into the bay, but think about what happens under flood conditions, right? As many of these systems are stressed, that they really get disappointed. And so, as you vote about this tonight, about building a, right, about passing the enabling legislation which permits the possibility of a 250-acre industrial park or warehouse, whatever it is, right, many of the folks here who've spoken in the past are neighbors to the south, are not immediate constituents, but still their neighbors to the south, a part of the community. We are facing exactly the same thing that the residents in the town of Elton would face if somebody built, you know, bought Camp Saginaw, paved it, and put it in an industrial manufacturing facility just a few miles from Elton Creek. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. Anyone else have anything to say this evening? There we go. Come on down.
I just wanted to reiterate a few things, so...
In your name again.
I'm sorry, it's Krista Lepchuk.
Yes.
And basically to discuss the HUD language, I do want to...
Can't hear you.
Sorry.
Begin the microphone.
Okay. I've never been accused of being a quack. Just wanted to reiterate some of the language in the HUD itself, the HUD language itself. I agree with Mr. Connolly, and also the new gentleman here. The warehouse, I think it's the biggest home with everybody. Everybody, just to set the record straight, I think everybody wants a sports complex. We all love kids, we have kids. Yeah, sports complexes, I don't agree. I also agree with the whole thing going on with Fair Hill. That's a great opportunity to bring in, you know, build things, support that, people will be coming in, restaurants or stores, things like that. But the warehouse part or light industry, that's our quality, which we know, you know, from the newspaper articles and the interviews with the developers and stuff like that, they're talking warehouse, and the area has enough, right? I don't know what's going on in the needle warehouse down there on 40, but that's a big, beautiful, you know, warehouse sitting empty, but you don't need more of that. So the problem is, is the, oh, why I get so nervous when I get up? I wish, like this morning, I was wishing I had a camera in my car, because I tried with my phone and I didn't want my kid killed, because I leave at six in the morning from my house, you know, early dark 30, a little later than early dark 30. But there is, I have to wait for a parade of cars to go past, okay, for me to just to get out on 213, right? Then, as you get closer to 40, there is nothing but trucks coming on, trucks going through. Once you're on 40, there are trucks barreling down 40, and many of them, 18-wheelers and big dump trucks, okay, at 65 miles an hour. Yeah, I was doing 55. Okay, I took a picture of one who was tailgating, mate, he was doing pass seven, okay? And that's just at six in the morning. I mean, to bring in more warehouses in Elton is crazy, with more trucks, but if you did have to do it, I mean, put them over by 95, you know, 95 is made for that kind of thing. 40 is not made for all this commuting with trucks, trucks and commuter cars, and 40 is a shopping area, right? It's made for the locals to go shopping, to go to the stores, to go to restaurants, and you just can't compete with all these trucks all the time. So to have warehouse, more warehousing in the HUD language is just inviting more opposition, and I don't see any way of correcting it. You know, you bring in two more warehouses or even one more warehouse, when are you going to expand the roads? That's going to be years down the street. As far as the taxes and stuff, and I could be wrong on this, but I thought there were tax breaks, you know, people in the, bringing in, like, let's say, a warehouse, okay? So you're not going to see any money from that, and the harsh taxes, and you're not going to see any of that money for like 10 years or something, which is, think about that, that's a child's whole school generation, right? By the time the kid goes to school, by the time he graduates, you don't see any benefits as far as money, money concerned, into the national. So who's going to pay taxes to expand the schools and expand those roads that those warehouse trucks are going to, you know, affect? One other thing is, I think that everybody wants, I don't think that HUD, the HUD is a bad thing, and I think most people agree that HUD is a bad thing. It's that, again, some of the things in there.
I understand.
I also said, and I said this last time, I think it's a major conflict of interest to have the developer, the developer's lawyers, the developer's subcontractors, putting wording into this HUD language. It's a conflict of interest, we're all the way around it. It's unethical, it's just not right. They should be putting in an application, just like anybody else. It's like, if I want to put a fence up, okay, and I want something changed in my zone and I need to get a variance, I put in my application, and I wait to find out. I come to the hearing, I wait to find out if it's A or N. I do not compute and say, oh, I want to reword this and reword that, and, oh, you know, I'm a lawyer, so I have the money for this, and I'm a developer, so put this in because it makes me happy, and that's how I'm going to make my money, if you put this up in there, right? So again, I think it's a wrong thing to do to accept that language, especially when most of the citizens, again, are not against HUDs, they're against manufacturing HUDs, or manufacturing in the HUDs.
Thank you. Mayor?
I thought you said two minutes. One to two minutes, is what I did, but I want to like...
10, 12, man.
I know, I know. I'm too nice. I'm too nice of a guy up here.
Yeah, well, I'm not going to turn around, I'm going to walk around. Hello, Dorothy.
Hello.
My name is Rose Whitehouse, I've lived here all my life.
Yeah, you might have pulled that mic. Just pull the mic down to you. There you go.
I don't think anybody in this room, or anybody in this town or community, is against progress or building. I think what you're considering is the way we're going to have to live. The traffic is terrible. I think it was Saturday, there were three accidents on 213 simultaneously. One at Redners and White Hole Road, the same time on my road, Frenchtown, and one at Cuthbert Restaurant, Lotus Point Road, at the same time. So, and I would like maybe to have called the afternoon, I'm sure, but anyway, that's what they're concerned about. I can't remember. They're going to change, their way of living, and people are happy with what they've got. So if you sit down and start to think, there's a JFK highway, there's Route 40, there's all these roads into Delaware, Baltimore, you've got to start thinking about, it's what's easy for the companies to get to the highways, not travel these back roads like it's going to happen. And by the way, someone on my road took a picture of, I guess it was the town, town trucks at the wells on Frenchtown Road where they're feeding the water into Elton. They took a picture of them three times last week, the trucks were down there at the wells. So everybody on Frenchtown Road, please check the water level of your well, because so far, five have gone dry. Five. So I think they're stealing a little bit of our water.
We're not using that well at all.
If you're not using the well, they took out 2 million gallons in one day to test that well.
That would have been, what, seven years ago, eight years ago?
That's right. So what are they doing down there now? The next time I see the truck coming down, I'd ask them, what are you doing? Because I'm not just amused enough to do that. But anyway, that's what I wanted to say, was it's, the people are not against growth. That means jobs were our kids, jobs were us who needed jobs, part-time jobs, anything, but they're not against that. And as far as the sports complex, I think it's wonderful for the kids, wonderful. I don't think anybody can say anything about growth, but it's just the way it's happening. Everything's clustered right down there on 213. Everything's clustered right there. Route 40, 213, can't happen. It's not going to happen. The people are against that, not the growth. It means jobs, it means more choice for everybody. So anyway, that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you. The town administrator is...
You're the culprit.
Down there.
You were the culprit. I'm a geological survey monitor, it's the water level as well. And a woman named Heather contacted me about access to the Tush Wells down there, and I was worried about her getting across, because she had to actually walk across to Tush Well Number Three to do the monitoring, and of course, the eight-foot ore down there. So I've been out there watching, and they cut it down, I guess it's five yards. So she can get out there, so I notify her that she can go there, and that's what you're going to do, get the wells or not, and operations and speed monitoring, plug and draw on the geological survey.
Anyone else have anything to say this evening?
Matthew Wurdecker.
I would have turned around and posed.
My name is Patricia Wells on the 894 Frenchtown Road, and I would be directly across from Industrial Park. Of course, I have concerns about the runoff.
You're the first to say it.
Oh. The traffic, the lights, you know, talking even to Amazon Warehouse. I've driven by the one in northeast. It's lit up like a Christmas tree. I purchased that house after my first husband was killed. I used my settlement money to purchase that house, so I've got some fire, I'm two and a half acres. And now I'm going to have this industrial park in front of my house, lights 24/7, noise, and I just don't think it's appropriate for such a rural area. And I do agree, the traffic has gotten really bad. I work right around the corner, it's about a three-minute commute. Now I sit 10 minutes to get from Frenchtown on 213 already. So I had started a petition, and I wanted to give that to you, because we've had some people that are also concerned, and, you know, the housing, like everybody said, I don't think we have a problem with that, it's a sports complex. But that industrial park in front of my house, frankly, breaks my heart to think about. And I seriously consider leaving the town. So I'd love to see some growth, but I just don't know if that's the place for an industrial park.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll bring that along, sorry.
In fact, it'd probably be better if you give it to Gene then earlier there.
Okay.
Gene, number two, you're right. There's a loose one. You want to give it to Kathleen?
She'll be my one.
Who was Kathleen?
Okay.
My name is Steve Lambert. I've been here to these meetings, about all of them, and I've been listening to what everybody's been saying, and I just feel that, like a lot of people in this room, this HUD concept, parts of it are really good. The sports complex, I tell you, I'm with you guys. My grandson's playing those leagues, so I'm with them guys. And I'm with, you know, Earl, I know you commented about it last time. And I think that's a good, good part. And the major homes, you know, that would be a good part. But as far as the industrial side of it, that road coming in for that industrial park off Route 40, which will go right behind my house on the 86 Sarah Drive, I'm right on the corner of that property, you know? And like the lady just mentioned... And like the lady just mentioned, all the lights, noise, you know, it's also all that kind of stuff. I mean, you can imagine sitting here in this room right now in dark, dark and all you hear is crickets, tree frogs. If that happens, you're going to hear brakes squeaking, brake brakes, you know, noise from the motors, exhaust systems, that is going to totally upset that feeling there in that little neighborhood, you know? And I just wanted to let you know that that's the part that the majority of people in this room are concerned about is the industrial part of this concept. And Mr. Jackson said, at one of the first meetings, he said, if it doesn't work for everyone, it doesn't work for anyone. So I would pray that you would consider that, you make a decision on that part of the PUD. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait a minute, wait a second, can I ask you a question? Are you the one that wrote the letter in the paper a couple of weeks ago about having a graveyard, your own, your family graveyard on Frenchtown Road?
Yeah, yeah.
You're not the Lambert?
My brother probably put that in there.
Oh, he put that in there? Oh, that's very interesting.
Very good. Now, does anyone else want to speak tonight? Seeing none, we're going to close down the public comment to Jean or Lisa. Bring anything to the table or you want to, want me to move with it? I can move with it. You had some recommendations?
I think as to any particularly, um, I think, I think to the extent that the board's going to be considering any of these more, um, high traffic, high industrial, I think it's a good idea because in a PUD, when you say it's permitted, because it doesn't have those underlying zoning districts, I think it's important to make sure that the town has protections and the public has the ability to comment on locations. So I think that special exceptions, or special exceptions with conditions would be appropriate for any of those larger uses to ensure that the public has the opportunity to make comments regarding any of those particular uses in those particular locations that are going to be proposed. So that, you know, the planning commission and the board are able to really truly consider those. And by making a special exception, a special exception with conditions, it gives the town oversight on those aspects. Similarly, Mr. Tony had some comments relating to the process for the variances. There is a process in there right now and it does provide, there has been public comment relating to, you know, the one here, the good and the bad when someone's making a proposal. The standards that are set forth are not standards that the planning commission would necessarily object something on the basis of, you know, the developer calls in their own needs for the modification, but it puts everything up front. I think it's important that you're the good with the bad because there are provisions within the PUD language that provide the town some way with, maybe encouraging some benefit that they wouldn't otherwise get through this type of development, whether it's here or in the utilization in the town. So it gives a little bit more control to the town by having them set forth, both the good and the bad, so that the town boards are also aware of the good and the bad when they're considering making the decisions. And so I would recommend keeping those items in place. And then there were some other verbiage changes that were recommended by the planning commission and then obviously the public consent of their comments. So, have any questions, any public comments or recommendations?
Well, there was a, there was a few amendments that was brought in front of us. One being Amendment One on Ordinance Five dash two thousand and nineteen, which was in the revised Article Ten, permissible uses, Section Seven, permissible uses table. And you're stating that motor vehicle fuel sales to be permitted by special exception with conditions in a large PUD. Is that what you're asking on that amendment?
For your letter.
For your letter?
Yes.
Okay.
I think so.
And you do not want, you believe that it should not be permitted in a small PUD?
I don't think, I mean, my...
It's not appropriate.
I don't think it's an appropriate use, given the kind of small idea of what a small PUD is versus a large PUD.
And I think that the board was okay with that. Now Amendment Two, I just wanted to read them out, the amendments that we would be making some changes to. Also Amendment Two would be to revise Article Ten, permissible uses, Section Seven, permissible uses table. Permittable uses nine point seven zero zero, car wash to be permitted by special exception in the large PUD, but not allowing it in small PUD.
For the same reason, for larger use, so I think special exception so that the town's able to consider variable locations being proposed, but also to get the planning commission on if they are appropriate.
Then there was an Amendment Three, which would add, add said property must be under single ownership at the time of a PUD concept plan application.
That's in part of the definition portion, that's in both the zoning ordinance itself, the subdivision regulation. It's part of Article eleven already, so it's really just kind of being repetitive of what's already required in Article eleven, but just for clarity, I think it would be important to add in there that the small PUDs have to be under table ownership, similar to the large PUDs.
Okay, and then the last amendment was on Ordinance Six dash two thousand and nineteen, which was also add said property must be under single ownership, so it's repeating it again under Ordinance Six.
Right, and definitions in two different sections.
Okay. We went through, uh, just the process, of course, with this. We had, uh, we had a public hearing on September sixteenth, we had a public hearing on September eighteenth, we introduced it on September eighteenth and we did hopefully adoption tonight on October second. One of the things that when we go through this process, we not only have our staff work diligently on this process, but we also have our legal counsel looking to make sure that we're doing the right thing, but we also have our planning commission, who is very important to this board. They're very important, the residents of the town, they look over these, they've looked over the ordinance to make sure it's the right ordinance for our community collectively. Now, there's a couple of things that, I want to follow the planning board's recommendation on this, but there is two things that I'd like to get, to go back to the planning board. One would be, we need to get the definitions squared away. I understand both parts of the definition. One, one side, if we have clear, concise definitions, then everyone knows the definition of what can happen, what can't happen. The bad side of that is, we're taking away flexibility from staff a little bit. And I don't know if we want it, part of me, I'm okay by firming it up, but on the other side, I'd always like to have some flexibility there, the staff can make a decision if it's a hybrid type decision. But I'm asking Gene if you could get the planning board to look at that. The other issue that keeps coming up has been the ten point two one oh, Article Ten, Section Seven, in regards to the warehousing. I believe that the planning board, in, my belief is that they didn't want any warehouses in this PUD, but I also believe that, I'm hoping that they were looking at the whole town, not just the Southfields project. When we look at this, we have to look at it for the whole town and there's probably an opportunity for eight, nine, ten PUDs that could happen in the town of Elton. So with saying that, I'm not wanting to go against the planning commission here, but I would like to do an amendment that that section would have to be under a special exception and it would go back to the planning board. The planning board then would make the ultimate decision. So if a, a, a trucking center wanted to come into the town of Elton, they make the decision. If Amazon wants to come into the town of Elton, they make the decision. And I think it gives them the flexibility because I think if you just cut everything out, I think we're doing ourselves a disservice. So I would ask the board to accept Ordinance, Ordinance Five dash two thousand and nineteen with the amendments that I just spoke about and also changing Article Ten, Section Seven, ten point one zero and making it a special exception on the warehouse language.
As you commented, that's a, under special exception, I don't know if the planning commission have a chance to review it, but we're assuming appeals also. So there's two citizen advisory bodies that are, for our team here, that look at that very carefully.
And it's important, I think, to all of us up here, we don't want anything like that allowed by law. It could, it could happen, it's things that we want to have some control of or we want to make sure that our boards have control of. I just don't want to give a cart launch on any type of industry coming into our town without having some type of ability to take a look at that. So is the board okay with that?
That's very good.
Do we have a motion?
Some make motions for, 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 with the special exception.
Okay, we've got a motion on Ordinance Five in a second, any discussion on it? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a motion to approve Ordinance Six dash two thousand and nineteen with those comments that I just stated.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, thank you. All right, Lou, do you have anything on your report, anything else?
No, I apologize for being down to Frenchtown Road. We're here for a visit, but we don't have to...
Well, I'm glad you were down there. Rob, do you have anything this evening?
No, I don't have anything to say.
Earl?
Yes, I would, first of all, start with saying I'd like to ask everybody to take a moment of silence for a couple of friends that passed away. That would be Charles Hope and Edward Brown, who was a coach for Elton High School football team. Now, let's just take a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Earl.
And then, even though me and this guy don't get along too good, we're still, we're Elton. I'd like to recognize, and I'm going to say this because attitudes just don't kick with certain people, but anyway, I'm friends with everybody and as a representative for the town of Elton, everybody looks at what he's gonna say. I'd like to recognize Mr. Jimmy Nicholson for a hundred years of service in the Dennis family and I'm saying that, so for the record. Hey, we do, we got a difference down. So anyway, that, by being said, also, I'm not one Facebook or media or all that junk about he says, she says, but for those people who commented certain things about Earl Pyner by the last meeting, just wanted to set the record straight. I have no problem sharing it from face to face, but writing, saying things back and forth, no, Earl Pyner's not collecting any money off of this PUD field. I rely on our administration to do whatever they have to do to make the right decisions for the board. I'm saying this because I rely on them, I, I'm not an expert at the planning, in the planning department, zoning, none of that. The other thing is, we make our comments about the roads, the condition, and again, I'm not citing anybody's comments, please, accept, I accept your comments. But that is for the state highway to determine based on the developments and their, their, the way, the layout of the, the project, they have to be the ones to decide which ways the roads go and how to design, all that stuff. I am not a road expert, that's just for the comment, for the people that are making comments about me. So EPA part, I'm not a comment, I'm not an expert in that, never will and never will have that knowledge, but those are people that decide all the changes and stuff in, in these different kind of, of development changes. And the last thing, we've been fighting on Bridge Street, I mean, on Bridge Street, on Delaware Avenue, bridges, we have no control on the bridges, I'm not expert on that either. But when it comes down, someone made a comment by, isn't Earl Pyner concerned about the bridge, the traffic going over? Yes, I'm concerned. I'm concerned about I ninety-five, Route Forty, but what can I do about it? Nothing. So anyway, for those people who want to make the comments on Facebook or social media, whatever you want to say, Earl Pyner's not an expert, not necessarily, we rely on our experts, thank you.
I also had listed that there should be some acknowledgement for North Street, so perhaps if the Elton Alliance has not done anything, and of course we're separate from them anyway, even though we work in concert, Louis, perhaps you can send a letter or come up with a proclamation over there and maybe we can get him to come, if not, one of us can deliver it to him personally. Everybody in agreement with that?
Yes.
Thanks, that's it.
Gene?
Yeah, I, I think I just want to make a brief statement for the record on the PUD We have been through a tremendous amount of paperwork, comments, suggestions, innuendos, insults, congratulations, just everything you can imagine. And I just wanted to reiterate to people who have concerns that this is not about one particular project, there has been such a fine line between the PUD adoption and Southfields and it's been our job to keep them separate and it's been a hard job. I had a lady ask me why I wanted to take the deer away from her yard and all I could say was you need to call the property owner and tell him that he's not allowed to do anything with his property because we don't own this property. We can only control, hopefully, what happens with it. And the owner of this property has every right to develop it in any manner that's allowed by law. And by law right now, well, before tonight, was, in my opinion, a lot more stressful on everything that we could possibly be worried about. Traffic, schools, infrastructure, everything, on and on and on. So adopting the PUD for South, that will apply to Southfields is going to be a plus, but in the meantime, this wasn't about Southfields. So my suggestion for anybody who has concerns about Southfields is if and when it comes before the planning commission, that's where you want to be. You want to be there on the concept phase as the developer comes in for this, for that project or any other project that falls under a PUD or any developer, that's where you can go and you can express your concerns. And I know that there's good, very good people on all these boards, especially the planning commission, and they will listen to you and they will do the best they can for you while they're sworn to look out for the town of Elton. So considering everything we've been through, I'm glad that we have arrived where we are and I look forward to moving forward and I hope it's a good experience for all of us. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Gene. The only couple of things I wanted to bring up, I will tell you, if anyone has an opportunity, please come to downtown Elton Friday night. It will be the biggest night in Elton for, I believe, in, in the, in the last X amount of years. It's an Elton alumni crawl, but also going on is the Elton football team is playing Oakdale, who knocked us out of the championship last year. I think we're a better team this year, we're going to do it. Also, the empty bowls is Friday night, there's a ribbon cutting for the showcase on Main. There's a lot of activity going on. Then on Saturday, we've got the Mini Hanes, the Arts Council venue, which will be in downtown Elton also, but I'm actually expecting at least a thousand, maybe fifteen hundred people in downtown Elton tomorrow night. So I think it's going to be a huge crowd. If you want to see Elton at its best and shining, Southburn Dam, Friday, Friday, Friday. Let's roll with me.
You're anxious.
I'm ready to go. Okay, with that, this is the time of the meeting, we open up the floor for any public comment for the good of the town of Elton, if anyone has anything to say. Yes, sir, Mayor Council on October the fifteenth, Tuesday at three thirty, the town of Elton is going to be hosting the Cecil County Cross Country Meet. All five high schools will be involved in the sporting event. You were invited to show, show up, Matt Roberts, who's the director of Athletic Sports for the Board of Education, has invited you for opening ceremonies, so you, I'll be getting more information to you later. Thank you, Edward, that's... Thank you, Edward X. That is, will be prior to our next meeting, and I'm excited about that. That'll be the first time we've ever hosted a county event. With that, seeing none, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.